Good morning, welcome to July twenty ninth, regular session of the Board of Supervisors. We'll call these Michelle Walker.
Schwartz.
Here.
Brandt?
Here.
Kirkback?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Paul.
Here. Please join in the moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand if you're able, if you want for the question.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda receivers, oppose or amend it?
So.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Public comments, do we have anyone either in the room or online that wishes to address an item that is not on this morning's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the presentation from Cedar Valley Coalition and Mr. Steve Parry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, everybody. It is a pleasure to be here and I appreciate the invitation from Mitch to come and just tell you a little bit about an organization that you've been a part of for many, many years. So, Cedar Valley Coalition kind of got started back in ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight, when Mayor Ruth approached the Chambers of Commerce to say, you know, it's been twenty years since there's been an organized delegation force along to Washington DC trying to establish those federal connections. And so, he talked to the two Chamber execs and they kind of decided they pulled together a group that was very small to go talk to the folks in Washington about air service in Waterloo, G D S. Anyway, the, at the time, I was the chair of the Cedar Falls Chambers, that's how I got involved. Well, we, we over the, over that year, talked about what we were gonna do, but really, it wasn't very organized. And indeed, it really kind of turned out to be a bunch of people from Waterloo going to Washington and saying, "Give us some money, get us some air service, we'll leave now." And, man, we got blistered by two of the senior members of the, of the staffs at Grassland Park. And they just said, you know, "You're, you don't know what you're doing. Let us give you a little guidance." And so, we went back to next year, a little bit more organized. And by two thousand three, we decided that really, we needed a much broader coalition of folks in the county. And so, we started talking to other people, which included the county. Interco, I can't think of what it was. Interco and, and some of, some of the other representatives, and you can see a list there of our membership now at the bottom of the page. But in two thousand three then, we formed the Cedar Valley Coalition, that's what we call it. And this year marked our twenty-seventh consecutive year of interaction with federal staffs and with our fellow partners. So, it's been successful and we've, we've enjoyed doing what we've been doing. Mission statement for the, for the Cedar Valley Coalition is there really is to, to represent the public entities of the Cedar Valley region, to inform federal officials about what's going on, what our challenges are, what our successes are doing, and to seek funding support for those priorities. In the old days, before two thousand ten, seek funding support meant to go out and try to get earmarks. Then earmarks went away in two thousand ten. So, since then, it's been much more of an educational effort, trying to make them aware and to have them educate us on what sorts of grants or forgivable loans, whatever might be out there, or just to, you know, solicit support from congressional offices for the things that we're trying to do, get grants in, in, in the county. That's really something that's made us different from all the other communities in Iowa, because most of the other communities that have a real organized effort to go to Washington, do it as sort of a, a chamber event. You know, they, they, like Des Moines, chargers, chargers playing, sometimes two. And they charge people like three or four thousand dollars for their airfare and for their hotel. They get people from other states to come address their group. And then with all the different entities that are in the Des Moines area, they just have to set up individual meetings with, you know, the mayor of Adele and, and the consul from Waukee and so on and so forth. So, we have always stayed focused on the public entities in the county and tried to, you know, tell those stories or give people the opportunity to tell those stories when we all go out on trips to Washington. As I say, the membership, we've got eighteen members right now, they're all listed there, but they're pretty much the local governments, education providers, economic development organization, nonprofits, healthcare, and kind of like, so, as you can see, all the members put together. Really, this coalition, as we put it together, exists to be our federal outreach initiative for the Cedar Valley region. We want to tell a story, what's going on here, make them aware. So, if there are opportunities that arise to help us with whatever our goals are, they'll be aware of them and can do that. And, and we also solicit, like I said before, support for various projects and things that are going on here. Another part of this that's, I think, been really important for us is this idea of having the coalition members talking to each other about what is going on in the area. You know, a lot of times, if you aren't talking to somebody from Habitat, you don't realize just how much they're doing, or, you know, the county, the cities, whatever. And so, I think that that attempt at trying to drive area-wide consensus building has been a really important side effect, if you will, of the coalition. We're, as a structure, we're very informal, there's no bylaws, there's no officers, there's no tax return, you know, it just, it's a voluntary organization and, and, as I said before, focuses on the public entities. But we also have Grow Cedar Valley, that's there to represent business at large. Alan is, is part of the coalition as kind of a healthcare provider. When you think about how big an industry healthcare is in here, besides the, the good things that we do in trying to keep people well, but just the number of people that are employed by the two hospital systems and the reach that they have in our whole labor ship, they're an important part. And then CBMA, Cedar Valley Manufacturers Association, kind of represents manufacturing, those are, those are the folks that are part of it. Each of the, each of the groups pays an annual dues. For most of the groups, those dues are seven hundred dollars a year. For the county, it's fourteen hundred. For the cities, it's even more than Waterloo's, close to four thousand. Cedar Falls is running twenty-five, twenty-six hundred. What the dues are gonna do besides support the efforts that we have putting everything together, they help us pay for a congressional reception that we do at the end of our day in Washington. And the, the dues entitle each organization, if they're at seven hundred dollars, each organization has one member that can go from their organization if you want to take two, like Grow Cedar Valley, for instance, often takes their chair as well as their president. And so, that second person pays a registration fee to go and even have unlimited numbers of people from the organization go as long as they're each paying the three hundred and fifty dollar registration fee. But the county gets two seats at the table. Cedar Falls gets two seats at the table and Waterloo gets four. And that's why their dues are stacked up. The last thing, it says we have an annual focus. And it's partly, I mean, there's, if, if you look through that book, and I gave you those books just to give you examples, they're obviously not current, I'll tell you why I'm not, but anyway, if you, if you look at that, you realize that there are lots of, lots of projects in the line that take years to accomplish. We all know that, you know, nothing seems to happen very quickly in the legislative world, it's, you know, go again, go again, go again. But there are also new things that can come up. And so I say it's an annual focus as far as what we do as we put together our plan for each year. I say a primary focus is our trip to Washington DC. We have tried to go every year for those twenty-seven years, but it hasn't worked out that way. Covid was a major problem for us. This year, we were right up to the edge, I mean, we were less than a week away. We still didn't know where they were going to assign us a room for a reception. We weren't sure who was gonna actually meet with us and stuff, and so we just pulled back and said, you know, "This is not working." And the other thing that we've done in the past is tried to go in, in May or June, we're gonna try to go next year in February, recognizing weather can always be tricky, but, you know, if we're gonna do it, we might as well be there in a time that allows them to know what we're talking about, being incorporated into the annual financial appropriation cycle and so on. So, we're gonna change to that. We try to always meet with each of the three members individually, as well as spend a day pretty much with their staffs and cover a bunch of different areas. Each organization that's a part of the coalition is not only entitled, but encouraged to bring forth things that are on your agenda that, that would be appropriate for the feds to worry about. And those all get incorporated into briefing papers. That's why I gave you the book, just to show you what I'm talking about when we're talking about briefing papers, gives you some examples. We don't do a book anymore because the staffs have said, "We don't want a book, just send it to us online, or give it to us electronically, that's all we need." So, we don't print the book anymore, which obviously saves us much money too, but, but I had some laying around in my office and so I just brought them along just as, again, an example. The focus areas that we've talked about this year in twenty twenty-five were three, education workforce. You see all the different organizations that had some input into that, which, you know, you've got the Career Center, CAPS and the K twelve systems. You've got Hawkeye with all their training partnerships and services, apprenticeships. U and I provides automation, automation, engineering technology, metal casting are three areas that they spend a lot of time talking to folks in Washington about. They also have their new nursing program that is intended to try to build workforce in that area too. So, you know, they, their focus for that group was really the courses and, and unique planning that is trying to increase employment opportunities for people in Cedar Valley. Transportation infrastructure, frankly, when we first got started, the county was probably the biggest player in the whole transportation infrastructure part. Engineering always went as a part of the trip. And, you know, then when earmarks went away, so did the engineering department, so, you know, it, it made sense. But for this year, the fifty-eight Green Hill intersection over in Cedar Falls, which I wouldn't be surprised is probably in the book even that I gave you here, but, you know, it's been a long-term project, but it's the second most deadly intersection in the state now. And so, with the growth that's anticipated there, if they ever bring the new hospital online, so on and so forth, that, that street's going to get more and more busy. And so, we need interchange, they're somewhat similar to what they did at Viking. We've also got the railroad, the rails going through town in Cedar Falls. So, we've tried to, to secure a rail crossing elimination grant and still working on that. In Waterloo, it's the street conversion, to get rid of the one-way streets on Fifth and Sixth, turn them to a, there's, believe it or not, there's a whole program within Department of Transportation just for converting one-way streets to a. And then obviously moving the rail yard out to the outskirts of town, it's been a big project that probably won't ever happen in my lifetime, I'm not sure about the rest of it, but maybe, but.
Sometime in this thirty years.
I mean, that, that's gonna be a biggie and without the earmarks, it, it makes it just that much more difficult to try to get the government to help me find that kind of thing. And then community development, you see all the different programs there that, that are effective, but really, our message, when we met with the legislative directors from the three, three offices, our message was, "So, what happens when these things go away?" Because that's what you're talking about, you know, I mean, when, when they talked about getting rid of FEMA, you know, what do you do if you have a tornado blow to town? I mean, we're probably not gonna have a hurricane, but we almost had a duratio last night, and we know what happened last time that happened to town. So, those things can always happen, FEMA's just one example, certainly the C, CBVG and Home Product Program, sorry, are really important and we've done a lot of work with those areas, but what do you do if all of a sudden you're left high and dry? And so, that was the conversation we were having with them. Unfortunately, they didn't know what they'd do, they just knew that that was what was happening. And maybe that was another little reason for us deciding not to make the trip up there because everything's just so up in the air right now. But anyway, so that, that at least gives you an idea of what we focused on. We, over the years, have encouraged you as supervisors to be involved in what we're doing. We've appreciated your long-term support and hope that continues. And we're happy that, that Rich is coming to the meetings and wants to be involved and, and Tabus is, is also a member from experience in Waterloo. And so, you know, we've got some representation, but we'd really love to see the county be a more active player because you can get benefit from it and we'll see to it that you do. So, with that, I'll close my comments and take any questions.
Steve, one of the things I've been concerned about, if we can get into the focus area, is our health department is critically dependent on those federal dollars and we had a scare earlier this year that they're pulling some of them away already. Is there a way of working that issue in and what the needs are for our public health department?
Absolutely. In fact, we've talked in the past about, that, you know, talked about whenever they moved on, about having the health department be a separate member. But there wouldn't be a real reason why you'd have to do that, just as engineering was, was sort of your flag bearer years ago, health department could be front and center for the county if that's where you see the most good.
Yeah, I've been seeing the, the need with Brian and attending the transportation meetings and that whole process. And again, we're so dependent on whether it's money for bridges or road reconstruction, them dollars really make a huge impact and it's been enlightening to me, you know, attending those meetings, realize how much, so.
Steve, I don't recall unless I overlooked it, ever seeing like any emails for invitations to Cedar Valley Coalition meetings. So, I may have overlooked it, but would you include me in that? I'd be interested if I could make it clear more.
And, and as far as a meeting schedule, we generally, well, now, it'll be in February, we'll probably start up in September, but, you know, then we'll meet monthly through the trip and then kind of take a break and start up again in the next, in the next fall. But yeah, I, I sure will. I'll include all of it if you want.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Is your, your twenty twenty-six, you said you'll start on that in September?
Probably, yeah.
Most likely. Will it include, I assume, some of these same twenty-five focus areas, but then enlarging it from there, is that?
And, you know, as I said, a lot of these projects are just, and.
Every year.
Requests, you know, we just keep beating on it. But, you know, transportation would be an area that I could see, you know, often having something new pop up that should be addressed.
Because they are so ongoing, obviously there's progress made, but what are some of the things that you feel have probably been the strongest, other than relationship building, and I think that's always a big one, but I meant as far as success.
One of, one of the easiest ones to point to, even though it took us about fifteen years, was the redoing sixty-three two pound. That was all, and a lot of that, most of that was done during earmark time. So, we were going out annually talking about that project and soliciting an annual earmark for it, but finally got that all done. The C fifty-seven interchange, two eighteen. You know, was one of the projects that wasn't, I mean, I remember the first time Scott Jordan tried to explain that and as it turned out, as it turned out, I knew more about it than he did, but that's okay, he wasn't really expected to have to know all about it, but for instance, just how much do you have to move that railroad track that was going through there before to accommodate the interchange and stuff? Those were some of the things that we helped explain to them and, you know, you, you got me flat-footed here, I can't come up with a whole.
No, I'm sorry.
Rapid fire list, but those are two really, really visible and easy to verify projects that would have probably happened, probably, but they did happen because we have an organized effort going, talking about.
All that constant reminding and bringing those subjects up and discussing them more, bringing, updating, that's all important too. That's why I said as much as we all know and you just sometimes dislike government moving slow, you know it does for a reason and, like I said, it's just kind of happening in there.
Yeah, you know, not only do we try to maintain our relationships in Washington, but we also include all the district representatives. We look around rooms and see at least two that have been involved in the past.
Yeah, as, as obviously, we've moved past earmarks. Probably the most direct method of impact for this organization, you brought up duratio, FEMA, and it does make me start to sit back and think a little bit, as we go through strategic planning, how intentional are we about having those conversations with federal members of frankly, what the hell they're talking about? If we're going to dismantle FEMA, what is the local solution? Because you're right, there is another duratio around the corner, there is a tornado, there is a flood, there is another natural disaster. And like it or not, and I don't, if there's gonna be this pivot from a federal response to a localized response, you know, having a group like this that yes, facilitates conversations with federal members, but I think also facilitates a conversation with local members about federal issues, certainly provides, I think, us with an opportunity to have a space. We've all got to think about a whole lot of stuff, it provides us a space to think about that future planning of what our lives would look like as a government without federal support for local disaster relief.
And one, one of the things that I didn't mention, but that we've tried to do with our, our month of meetings, is create an opportunity for people to bring forward an idea or an issue, and this would be a perfect example, you know, I mean, you're, you're not the only people that are gonna be worried about what would happen in that situation and here's a pre-made forum to have that conversation.
Unfortunately, because it could very much start impacting local dollars, because we, somebody has to fill in that gap.
Yeah.
And the service and where's that?
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much, Leo.
Thank you.
You appreciate it.
Let's move on to item four, claims and payments, this is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approved its expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims.
Second. Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is six hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Of that, two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and thirty-six cents is from the sixty-fourty fund. We have a few larger payments that are being made today that I would mention when I finish. We are paying an Esri fee, you know, about sixty thousand for annual licensing, paying the Department of Corrections forty thousand dollars for the first half of our jail assessment program. We are paying for a new washer and dryer for the jail, eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. We're paying a few ERPA bills today, Cedar Valley Nature Trail to tailor and origin design for seventy thousand seventy-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. And also, Conservation is purchasing several pieces of equipment that were funded through the CIP, the lift for seventy-one thousand, a new tool kit for seventy-four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars, and a mower for eleven thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and twelve cents. And I think those are all the large items today.
I don't, I don't recall, doesn't mean it wasn't. Washer and dryer, was that in our plan to replace that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It took, it honestly started, was funded, I think, out of the twenty-four budget, but got hung up in the specs and the, still some of the shipping delays, so it just is now getting finished up and installed.
Got it. Thanks.
Just arrived.
All right, we've got a resolution with a motion and a second.
Kirkback?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Yes. Item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. Obviously with some storms last night, we have crews out and about clearing several trees from roadway. We have had a few calls this morning on that as well, so that's underway, they're giving all that to clear it off. Other than that, we just have some construction projects that continue with our bridge crew up on Mount Vernon and also our contractor out on Dubuque, so. Questions?
Any issues with Brad?
Not that I know of, no. Pretty well.
You worked on it as a team, a part of the team, so.
I will say, having rode on Friday, it, it was wonderful. I felt super safe, I sent Kathy and Nate an email that was, they were wonderful.
With the Mount Vernon Bridge, how much work is there left to do on that? Like, I haven't had an opportunity to get out there yet, but I'd like to.
So, the, the bridge crew is finished, one abutment, they'll be switching to the next abutment here soon. Some delays every time it rains, obviously, it's like, it's pretty wet, so they're just doing some other prep work today that doesn't involve them being on site, so hopefully later this week, they'll start dragging piling again on the next abutment and get that one ready to go. So, if, if all goes well, we're probably another three weeks into that project, probably be finished and on the next one.
Thank you.
I think.
Good morning, Board. Candy DeWitt, Marketing Director. Just because I have some PTO coming up and we want to stay on track for the strategic plan, at our meeting at the beginning of the month, we discussed doing an adoption of the strategic plan on August twenty-sixth board meeting, and so along with that goes some logistics to get ready. I think this is, I think the plan is for this to be on the board agenda next Tuesday, but since I will be out of the office, I just wanted to be here if you have any questions. This will include, let's see, what was it? Couple weeks ago, we set aside some funds to do the rollout, so in that budget amount, there'll be, we'll repeat the boardroom and then do wall art design back here and on the side that display our mission and values, and then be doing some internal, external handouts that people can have internally to keep on track with, you know, what the mission and values are and where to find them. And then externally, when we do the rollout, to have a handout that has the mission values and top priorities for people. And so, that's kind of the plan. The painting does need two weeks to cure before we can do the wall art, so there might be a couple weeks when we have a board meeting where you don't have anything behind you, but that'll just be a process. And we had talked about custom signage for some departments. The ones that I've talked to know that they're going to do that out of their own budget, but that I'll work with them to get that done and, and figure it out, so. Any questions for me on anything that I've sent you? Because this stuff I sent you by email, but if there, if there's any questions, I, I look forward to answering them.
I know the total of the, the amounts showing you did was like fifty-eight hundred.
Right. I'm giving myself some space.
You're giving.
Yeah, yeah, because we had talked about, we had talked about doing maybe some signage in the windows downstairs as you're coming in and also possibly in the like boardroom area, or, I'm sorry, board office area, but I just wanted to see where I was at with the budget and so, to come.
To be like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I can. Yeah. Um if I if I wanna skew up my attention to detail, I need to focus not too many things on play.
Otherwise it goes in the general fund, so I guess it'd be all right too.
Oh, good to know. Okay, right on that.
We'll be okay with that.
Yeah. Any questions though for me? And then um we had talked about the priorities and the revising of the number seven priority and that was um a majority, so we'll plan on that unless it has to be that.
And you had mentioned in there, yes, I was gonna say that changed the wording, so unless anybody had any issues with it, that was kind of good to go, it seemed like. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any of the department head either in the room or online? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes approval for the July twenty second meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh consent agenda. The items listed below will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion. Unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution, roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hortonback?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item eight, the resolution of the agreement between Blackhawk County and the state of Iowa judicial branch for the reimbursement to the judicial hospitalization referee for services performed from July one, twenty twenty five to June thirty, twenty twenty six in Blackhawk County in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, five hundred eighty seven dollars and eighty eight cents. Be approved and direct the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second. Nobody here, I think everybody had a chance to look at the contract, see that it went well and actually faster than we thought it would, so it was super once you got all parties involved, so.
Thank you for your leadership and diligence and stick to the miss on that.
Hope we stay long.
Yeah.
Roll call please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hortonback?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item nine A, motion to approve rolled ice cream food truck to use Blackhawk County grounds on August first, twenty twenty five uh from one till five P M in the southeast parking lot of the Pine Crest building located in fourteen oh seven Independence Avenue, Water Drive.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item nine B, work session, local tuning policy. So we've had some iterations of this. I'll maybe just briefly start as the first that's, I think initiated it, it's a policy review, Mike and Amanda. If you wanna chime in, especially Mike after some discovery of uh existing state law that sort of teased us up anyways for us. Obviously, so I first got the idea of of something here a few years ago. Road striping project difference was about five hundred dollars on about two hundred thousand dollar contract in order. A company out of Orange, Orange City, I think. Received the bid, they were five hundred dollars less than a company in Cedar Falls. To me, it seems reasonable to come up with, and at the time, it didn't feel as if there was a framework. This is probably the biggest thing for me. It didn't feel there was a framework um as a supervisor to not go with that lowest bid. So, yeah, talked with Mike, tried to come up with um a policy and some some frame that allowed for us um to consider within reason, and it's up to us to to decide what that reason is. But within some reason of allowing some preference for bids that come in pretty close. They're the local company versus not out of the area company. How do we make sure that those dollars stay in our community, especially as we look through our strategic plan, you see economic development rose pretty high. For us to then, it sort of seemed like it made sense. Crafted a an initial policy, really debated uh the word may and or may and shall. I think were the two words that we were between, whether we wanted to require or allow for flexibility. I think in what we crafted, it is somewhat flexible. I'm, to be honest, I'm open. Um if the board has a a preference one way or the other there, we want to have it as a strong requirement. But we also wanted to make sure that as departments have different needs, recognize that there's a whole lot of factors that go into this. For me, it was really the framework for us to at least question, discuss when we get those bids back. Hey, we're at a pretty nominal difference here and we've got an ability to invest into a company that's invested uh here at home, so. The the price variations, you know, no greater than five percent, uh higher than the lowest qualified bid for quotes, uh for bids of quotes, um for projects under half a million and no greater than three percent for projects over half a million. And none of that is to exceed thirty thousand dollars, so. A project like Pine Crest, for instance, that was seven, that would be, that that's just the the number. That would be still capped at that thirty thousand, so we wouldn't be in a position where we're just out oogles and oogles of money. There is a cap, there's a reasonable, um what I felt is is a reasonable bit of wiggle room to allow for these local businesses to be able to uh to have a shot at that local government's projects. There is, this does only apply to projects that are not, where it's not excluded from like D O T, there is some exclusion. There's some, there's some, there's some language there in code that doesn't allow the local preference. So in those places that there's not state or federal language that precludes us from it, it allows us here to to have some preference. Mike, if you've got some other pieces there?
Yep, well, I'll go ahead and provide kind of an overview. Everything, everything supervisor Hall just says correct. There are different parts in there, to a great extent, these are different colors on the draft uh policy. So I want to talk about these different parts, which which ones, in my opinion, must be passed and which ones are up for debate, so to speak. So first of all, um at the very beginning, this is a clarification sentence in the opening paragraph under policy that unless otherwise stated, uh lowest reasonable responsive quote bid proposal should be accepted. That is just to make clear, because sometimes when you read the individual sections of the bidding and purchasing policy, they don't always they don't want it to make clear that you're supposed to go with the lowest bid, everybody knows that, but that's that's to make that clear. Of course, we use the word reasonable responsive, because those are what Iowa Code Chapter twenty six uses. The county has always adopted their standard when it comes to determining a bid. I think that this, or when it comes to awarding this, I think that this should be adopted without any real debate. That is just in the spirit where our bidding policy has already been, it's clarifying language.
Is this all, when when you're saying these things, and I know you're gonna give us the definitions of the different colors, um that this was kind of, I don't know, that is the right policy, but um the right wording to use for, from the policy review committee? So everyone's seeing these changes and?
Yes, everyone in the policy review, and I can, I can talk about that as well as to how the policy review committee looked at theirs. I don't think there was any dispute that, you know, really any debate on the policy review committee about adding this sentence. Secondly, under a section that on my copy is in blue, uh it is Iowa preference. This is something that we've always done and it, the language would show up now and then in R F P. But the the reality is that state code requires that if bids are are comparable in price uh from an Iowa bidder compared to a bidder from out of state, Iowa entities are required to go with the Iowa bidder and they are supposed to adopt policies stating that. Uh so what I've done here is I have simply taken the language straight from the relevant code sections uh and put that that language in here in saying that in deciding to award a project bid or determining a vendor for which purchase a product or service, the county shall give preference to purchasing Iowa products and purchasing from Iowa-based businesses if the bids submitted are comparable in price to those submitted by other bidders and meet the required specifications pursuant to Iowa Code Section eight eight point three eleven sub twelve. I'm gonna stop there. The code does not define what comparable means. Uh there isn't a case that, as far as I know, I've looked for one, uh that defines what comparable means. The county can define that if it wishes to, uh but this is the the bare minimum makes us compliant with the code uh by saying if it's comparable. Now, we could say that it has to be exactly equal. We could say that it does differ by more than a thousand dollars or whatever we wanted to pick as our standard, or we can leave it like this, because uh this allows you some flexibility to determine comparability based maybe on the size of the project, based maybe on um, you know, some other factor that makes it comparable. But the code requires this, at least this. And then moving on in this section, in addition, contractors for county projects shall use only those products and provisions grown and culled produced within the state of Iowa when they were found, when they are found in marketable quantities in the state, are of a quality reasonably suited to the purpose intended and can be secured without additional costs over foreign, you know, state products or products of other states. Well, we can say that separately. Um this section shall apply to agricultural products grown in the state, even if the products are not in the stage of processing that the agency usually purchases the product. Now, when they say agency, in this case, it also includes the county. This is a very old statute, you can tell because of its dwelling on coal. This is, I've seen this language in many of our R F Ps just kind of as a cover-up backside sort of sort of thing there. I've not seen this be given much effect, but I think it makes sense to put it in the policy along with the preference for Iowa products and Iowa uh labor, Iowa businesses. And for that reason, I think this should pass at least in this form without much debate. If there is debate, it would be over whether the county wants to define comparability. However, because of the local preference, uh that's been that's been proposed also within this, and this is when we get into the red and purple language coming up. That kind of takes care of defining comparability, because we we talk about when you can give preference to a local product. Uh now that granted, that local product would be something from, or actually that local product, a local business, and that would be a local business within the county. So, yes.
We're not required to marry those two. Because because we're defining comparable on the local side, we we're not even, I don't think we even use the word comparable.
Nope, we don't.
On the, on the, on the local preference side, so I don't, I just don't want to be in a spot where we now have to lower our threshold on the local, because we don't want to exceed a threshold for a statewide.
We do not. The uh the local is is more restrictive and intentionally so. It's also possible that the board may pass the Iowa preference without passing the local preference. In my opinion, the Iowa preference section is required. In my opinion, the local preference section is not required. That is something that is, that is up for debate. So any questions on the Iowa preference proposed?
Could we, were we, begin the defining comparable? Stating that in the local preferences in parentheses behind it, that this is comparable or the comparables?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So the state statute stating that they gotta be comparable, but it doesn't tell us what comparable is.
Exactly.
So are you saying that then if we have the local preference, that's telling us what the comparable is on the state requirements as well?
Well, it, no, it says what's co- what's comparable for local preference reasons, or what's, as we put it, relatively equal.
Could it be both?
It could be both. It could be, we could, we could define it the same as that in fact for Iowa purposes in case you are comparing Iowa companies to an out-of-state company. So if it's within five percent within a certain uh, within a certain price category and three percent within a higher price category, you could say that uh the, our preference for Iowa businesses and Iowa products all is defined the same way. So yes, we could define it the same. This policy at this point intentionally does not. All right? Or this proposed policy issues. Any more questions on Iowa preference specifically? All right. Now, I'm gonna skip over local preference for just a second here and point you to the very end. There is also, by the way, well, not quite the end, on page six. It formerly, uh there is kind of a uh, just more of a, I don't know, it reads better. If you look under section P, alternative purchasing procedures. You say in the event a department head or elected official, it now says a department is approved, because the the head or the official would miss. So that, that I would advise them to go ahead and pass. That's just to make it a little better. If that seems confusing in any way, let me know. But then at the very end, uh there is a a section S proposed. This is something we have covered in the past with our our F Ps. And this will not totally solve the problem of when people submit a proposal that say it's confidential, because what we try to do is we try not to just assume that the fact that we told them it wasn't uh is enough. What is, we've proposed would happen, for example, if there's say a public records request for a bunch of bids on a particular project that was led on the jail phone system several years ago. Um we would say to the requister that, you know, X, Y, and Z bidders said that their bids are confidential. If you care to, if you want to see those bids, uh what you're gonna have to do is file a legal action. They'll name both the county and the bidder as defendant, and then the court will decide whether and to what extent uh there is confidentiality within that bid. The reason bidders frequently do that are, they're multi-fold, but the biggest one they claim is that there is proprietary information. Of course, a lot of them just, you know, they competitively bid these maybe below market price in order to try to to grow their portfolios, so to speak. So there are a lot of reasons that they do it. It puts the county in a tough situation. And so this proposed section S is that states upon awarding a project to a vendor that submits a bid or proposal unless agreed to otherwise in writing in advance and subject to the requirements and limitations via of open records laws, I'm sorry, applicable open records laws, at a time, at the time a winning bid or proposal is selected and the county has entered into a contract with the vendor that submitted the winning bid or proposal, the contents of the winning bid or proposal shall no longer be considered confidential. So this is to say that once we decide on one, once we decide on a winner, that confidential, confidentiality goes out the window and this would be added to every request for proposal. I don't think this should be controversial, uh because we were all aware of public records. requests. This makes it easier for the county to say, hey, look, you knew the policy, we told you the policy, this is a public record now. A lot of times we've been doing recently with me, when we're doing contract revisions, is we state, um, subject to open records laws, if they put a confidentiality provision. That means that when we receive a open records request, we can provide it because that's generally required for most every contract. There are some proprietary sections, but generally those are required for contracts. So I don't think this should be real confidential, or real controversial, I'm sorry. Any question?
Yeah, so this really isn't changing anything that we do right now. It's just stating it really for clarity for everyone to know.
Exactly.
Okay. And the and the reason it's in yellow or green or whatever this color is?
I picked that just for a different color.
Okay. So the colors coordination isn't from timing of any additions or any special, right? Okay.
Exactly. I tried to, I tried to do everything in color when I was doing it so that we could be clear what was part of the old policy and what wasn't, so.
No, I appreciate the color. I just got various colors. I wasn't sure.
No, I don't blame you for asking that. There's no color coding, so to speak. Any other questions about this proposed subsection S?
Well, that's an easy one.
Yeah, but now we wanna turn back to the hard one. This is on page two, a local preference. Now, I want, I'm gonna talk, I'm on the policy review committee, so I'm gonna talk about how this meant on there, first one is gonna talk about what the policy proposes, or what policy is proposed. Supervisor Hall again was correct in how he described it. What this does is it defines local business as a business that owns, operates out of or leases a building within county limits of Blackout County and uses that building for actual business operations. So it's somebody who does business here in the county. That was how I I defined it when I drafted this. That was based, I believe, I'm not recalling for sure, but I believe on how another county drafted theirs or another city otherwise. Now, this was done as an optional policy, so it was not done to require our departments to go with the local option. It gave them the option to do so. So it states after that, county boards and departments are encouraged to give some preference to businesses that pay taxes and participate in the local Blackout County economies, Blackout County communities unless the preference is not allowed under the terms of this policy. And by the way, that includes that it's not allowed under federal bidding law or DOT or those things. Then it states, preference should not be so great that it imposes exorbitant costs. Therefore, and this is where we kind of, we start to define it, county departments and boards may, that's an important word here, it does not say shall or are required to, it says may, that means they have the option, may purchase goods or services from local business, businesses when the cost and other considerations are relatively equal. So then we move on and say the cost is relatively equal when the cost difference is no greater than five percent higher than the lowest qualifying bid or quote for projects under five hundred thousand dollars and no greater than three percent, I should say higher there actually, for projects five hundred thousand dollars and over, with local preference difference not to exceed thirty thousand dollars above the lowest qualifying bid. And then it states, in this case of scored proposals, because as as you're aware, a lot of our proposals are not just a straight-up lowest qualifying bid determinant, but they score up based on several factors. In the case of scored proposals, i.e. where proposals are evaluated with a score of factors beyond cost alone typically by a team of reviewers, as in the case of evaluating proposals for professional services, reviewers of proposals from local businesses are permitted to score the cost factor of proposals of local businesses the same as the cost factor in the lowest cost qualifying proposal if the cost submitted by the local business does not exceed the cost of the lowest cost qualifying proposal by more than five percent for projects under five hundred thousand dollars or three percent for projects five hundred thousand dollars and over, with the local preference difference not to exceed thirty thousand dollars above the lowest qualifying bid. All other factors considered in evaluating and scoring proposals shall be factored without regard to local preference. So what this means is if you've got cost, experience, aesthetic, whatever it might be, features, all these different things, on the cost factor alone, if you have proposal A from New Jersey that says the cost is gonna be thirty-five thousand dollars and you have proposal B from Iowa, or I'm sorry, from Blackout County, and the and the cost is thirty-six thousand dollars, which would be within, I believe, it's three percent, or it's certainly within five percent because it's a lower bid, then you can go ahead, if you were gonna give twenty-five possible points, you were gonna give twenty-five to the New Jersey bid for being the lowest bid or being lower than I expected or something like that, then you also give twenty-five points to the Iowa proposal because it is within that range from the the lowest proposal. And I know that gets a little bit confusing, but that is, that is the way I conceptualize it for how you would make this policy apply to a scored proposal unless you just out-and-out created a different scoring criterion for is it a Blackout County business or not, you know, if Blackout County, if it's Blackout County business, give it one point here, if it's not, give it zero, you know, that would be, kind of how that would work. This was taken from another, I believe, where it's very similar to what I wanna say to C.C. Rabbits, and I would have to go back and look at it. Now, local preference shall not apply where number one, there is no local business that A submits a proposal or bid in the case of a request for a proposal or bid, or B is known or understood to provide the goods or services sought in the case where this policy requires comparison of price quotes, advertised prices, or list prices. So there's, you don't even have to give them consideration, you're not even encouraged to give them consideration where you know there's not a local option either by virtue of who bid on your project or by virtue of what's available to go out and compare prices from. Now then, projects or items are, another issue or area where local preference doesn't apply is when projects or items are let or purchased pursuant to state or federal law or regulation, and such law or regulation does not explicitly allow for local preference. So I doubled down and put that explicitly within the local preference area to make that clear. Now, that was basically the original proposed local preference policy within there. However, if you turn to the next page, we're on page three now, this is in purple. It's a section entitled Statement of Applicability of Local Preference. Some department heads express concern to me personally and to the committee at large as to how they want this policy to work. Number one, some departments, I believe, Tavis, I believe you talked to the Sheriff's Department, for example, wanted the option of not going with local preference. Some departments actually said, we don't want local preference, but if we're gonna have it, we want it to be required because then we're all gonna be treated the same way. Conservation and engineering, and I believe maintenance raised that concern to me in agreement with each other. Either way, there was some concern, and I remember talking to Kathy about this specifically, about when local preference applies, we should have it be applied, have it applied at the time the project is approved. It shouldn't be something where you can decide whether you're gonna prefer the local option after you get the bids, but rather it should be at the time of letting so the bidder knows what they're getting. So in this section, it states, when local preference may apply to a project or purchase, any agenda item for approval of the letting of the project or purchase, in addition to any agenda item for approval of the project contract or purchase being made, shall state to the board, and that by the way is intentionally a little B board because it applies to any of the boards that are deciding within the county, that the project or purchase is subject to local preference if the requesting department intends to utilize local preference in selection of a vendor or contractor. In a request for proposals or request for bids, the requesting department shall state in the request for proposal or request for bids whether local preference may apply in the selection of the bid or proposal, and if local preference may apply, provide the local preference language from this policy or a summary thereof within or as an attachment to the request for proposals or request for bids. When the requesting department selects a bid or proposal and recommends the same for approval by the appropriate board, it shall be stated in the recommendation whether local preference has factored into the selection of the bid or proposal. So what this does is it makes clear at the time of bid letting that local preference may apply, could also say shall apply here. That was discussed to some extent, but at the very least, it should be, the the general thrust was we should give them notice of this policy at the time of the bid letting. Now, there has been some opposition to this policy as well, and I, that has been where there's concern that in, I have not, in my reaching out to other counties, have only heard back from two, I've heard back from yet another, we have not collectively heard from that it's affected or impacted bidding much at all in those counties. I did ask an attorney in Johnson County to go back, and I actually doubled down on that this past week, to go back and ask another department of his what they thought about it, but overall, people are not seeing an issue, at least out of the view of story in Johnson County, they've had your back from Scott on it, concerning this. So there is a concern though on part of departments that, number one, it could induce a number of bidders because people who are outside of the county may be inclined not to bid. That was a concern. That's a real concern inasmuch as the county has had some projects over the last few years where we have not had a lot of bidders, I can think of at least one where we didn't have any bidders. So that's, that's possibly, I can think of at least two more where we have one bidder. However, the one bidder, both of those have been in county business. Another concern that was expressed to me is that it's going to drive the amount of bids up, that because local preference would apply or could apply, a local business might determine that, you know, it can bid higher just simply on the fact that we're probably gonna go with a higher, or we're probably gonna go with the local option, maybe at least it's close enough to the non-local, which is some concern of that. Of course, there's always concerns about administrative headaches associated with creating a longer policy that I am sensitive to, and I realize I've already recommended a longer policy irrespective of just particular situation. What, and Amanda, if you, or I think Ryan, you may have been there as well, Michelle, you may have been there as well, if they, I wanna get this right, but the way that this occurred, the way that the deliberation occurred at the policy review level is that there wasn't a clear preference one way or another as to whether it should be optional or whether it should be mandatory. My opinion was that it should be optional and that it shouldn't, and that's just as a committee member, that's not a legal opinion. That way it affords our departments greater flexibility. But the general thrust of the, of the committee was this, you know, we have enough mass here in terms of what the policy should look like, if it's going to be adopted by the board, how the policy would work if it is adopted by the board. And at this point, the board's going to have much of the same debate, but we should advance the policy that we have to the board for consideration. It was not as something where the, I don't recall that the policy review committee recommended approval for it, I certainly didn't at that point, but the, because there was some disagreement and everything, the thought process was that it would be better debated by the board at that point because of the review committee, we were kind of at a point where we were spinning reveals, for lack of a better term, on this proposed policy change. So that is where things were left at policy review for the local preference policy. Any questions or comments on that? Tavis, if you first of all have any clarification, because you were a part of this. All right, so any questions by any of the board concerning the proposed local preference policy?
I just wanna, wanna start by saying thank you for, in particular, Mike, to all of your work and diligence and research and conversations, department heads obviously as well, for reviewing and considering all of that. Policy ain't easy.
It's, uh, it is. Democracy was not meant to be a clean process, right?
Uh, it is. As someone who always likes to just get it done, this has been a year and a half plus in conversation, and and do appreciate the worthfulness, frankly, of crafting a policy that allows, maintains the may so that there is some department flexibility, but also guidance if we are to adopt, if a department is to utilize the local preference policy, that there is some shalls in there that give us a tighter framework. I thought that was artfully done, rightly on on your part, so thank you for.
You bet. And again, something that the board may wanna factor in this, and this has come up in other policies that we've discussed, is how bad is the situation now? Are we really seeing a lot of times where local options are not done? As Supervisor Hall noted, there was at least one recent example that was pretty stark, I think, why, why the policy was proposed itself.
And I do think it was stark because we don't have that many. I was gonna say that was kind of the one we remember because I think since that, we've all been kind of noticeably paying attention to ask those who are coming in and not seeing any of them applying, except for that one.
I think it actually happened twice, though.
Oh.
I think the same thing, because striping happens every year. I think the same, if I recall, I think the same issue.
And maybe.
I'd have to look back at the dollar.
See, that's what, that's been my concern, is that we have no statistics, we have no information that's providing the decision that we're trying to make here, and as you said, to policy is difficult, it makes it longer than like, say, the revisions and the updates and the things that typically policy review has been doing for years. There's probably been very little policymaking that I think I've been involved with, or that's occurred probably in several years. And I was talking with Rich before I went on vacation and said, you know, this is, it seems like the policy review committees, meetings have become very labor-intensive and, you know, requiring long meetings and very thorough discussions and conversations and more questions and more time. And and I said, and I know.
More mic time.
More what?
More mic time.
More mic time.
Yeah, more that too, yes. And I said, but that's been more for the new, it's been the food and beverage, it's been this local preference, it's not the tweaks and updates and revisions that are made to the others, and it's made me rethink a little bit of, policy creating should probably be handled maybe differently, or I propose that, that those sessions that we have would be work sessions and it would be all board members hearing, having input, you know, comments, questions or whatever, hearing the staff, hearing what everyone is saying, not just getting a summarized version from you, even though I appreciate very much what the two of you have done. But it's made me think like food and beverage, how, once we're putting these policies into place, it's not just like a recommendation from the committee saying. it's not just like a recommendation from the committee saying, yes, we added these words, or this wording's been added, or we've created it, but it's us actually agreeing with all of this that's new. And so to me, that's something maybe we should be considering going forward when we are creating new. It's all five of us that are involved and hear it and see it and touch it and feel it and have responsibility for it as well as, as a committee and, and staff and everyone else involved in that too, but that it becomes a work session for us. But that's just, like I said, that was just my thoughts, um, and we talked about it then because it, you know, the meetings have gotten to be two and three hours in addition to department head meetings and things like that too. So there's probably pros and cons for doing it this way or not. I'm just saying that that was something that I recognized very much in the creation of this. Only two supervisors were included in the conversations, the discussion, to hear the good, bad, and ugly of any of these things that you highlighted for us. And so by doing that, um, we're trying to play catch up or understand just by looking at a document. So to me, that's a, that causes me frustration.
Linda, this is Chris, uh, that was kind of spirit of the discussion. In that meeting was that we were at the point that this really just needed the full board discussion, rather than us trying to make a, a recommendation one way or the other, so that's kind of what led us to this work session today.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you, I appreciate that. I don't know if I would've saved some frustration if we'd have done it a year and a half ago, but I, another thing I wanted to comment on, if you want to comment on this too, please.
Well, I think it's, because even like, we've had telework policy, food and beverage, we've had local, this, and it is, it has been a challenge because this is now, we just started re, meeting monthly and it wasn't intended to be like policy review. You actually just, like, we're seeing very old dated policies that we haven't touched in a long time and trying to learn why it was established. Oh, it was some grant back in two thousand and, so yeah, it does get, and even like telework policy, that really didn't even, that was something that we kind of formed. It was Caitlin, TJ, um, reporter's office, uh, Garg, myself, Al, that kind of helped push that along. Didn't really come out of policy, but eventually kind of went to policy review. But it is an interesting, I think we are getting caught in that a little bit as to, and that's what even Tavis, or Supervisor Hall and I have talked about as well, that like, and ultimately the board does set policies. This policy review is really more just get a schedule, let's actually review our policies, our employee handbook, the board policies, possibly ordinances, things that have kind of just, you know, needed to be actually looked at. And is this accurate with Iowa code? As we've learned sometimes it's not because Iowa code has changed. So, um, but yeah, Chris, that Supervisor Schwartz is absolutely right. Like, we definitely got to a point where we're like, okay, I don't think we can work this out anymore. I mean, we maybe could, but ultimately it's kind of a board, gotta push it to the board at this point. And I know that's been some of the concern, that can things stop at policy review? And that's where I think it's this creation is where that gets a little blurred and misunderstood. As opposed to a review is really just, this has already been created, we're just reviewing it. Does it need to still be existing, or is it something that needs to be tweaked, or should we eliminate it? So yeah, it is an interest, I think that group would have some openness to, I mean, I don't think they necessarily expected to go into this and create a bunch of policies, but it is just kind of the natural framework where it's a, you know, and it is a broader group now. I think we haven't even established through the board yet, um, you know, the newer members, but it has, we've made it larger. That was something we discussed, um, Supervisor Schwartz and I did along with, um, Mike Trenton, uh, last year, because before it was just like five of us.
We thought the representation of the most impacted departments was lacking.
Yes. So whether that is, I mean, that isn't, I think we have felt that a little bit through this process. And you really need to dedicate kind of a small team to work on like food and beverage. It couldn't get there until we dedicate or telework or even local preference. It seemed like it almost needed a subcommittee or group to just dedicate every week working, and same with like HIPAA. Which is not a new policy, but in that review of that, uh, takes a little bit more, uh, time than even meeting just once a month.
I do think it's a, I mean, I don't wanna inflate the two, um, you know, just individual policy and just the board's approach to policy creation. But I would say that I think what might be the best path forward is the board to do work sessions. At least get to a point where we're directing staff, hey, we want you to put resources towards this. And even if it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna vote for the policy at the end, but at least saying we want staff to dedicate resources, time, energy to fine tuning the policy. Here's the direction. I think staff then goes forward, does their due diligence within their own disciplines and brings a policy back to us. That, that probably is the best path, path forward versus a, a member of the, of the board takes a policy, two staff, says you'll work it. If there's no appetite from the board, at that point, we've wasted time, we've wasted energy. And, uh, yeah, I think it would probably help smooth out, I feel bad that IT has had AI on that policy review agenda for three months or so, maybe more.
We just talked about it in July for the first time.
Yeah.
And that's one that I think too is important for, I mean, it's kind of like how telework was. I mean, that was more pushed by department, or by departments, but also it would have been helpful to have had a discussion with you all to say, are we thumbs up, thumbs down? And then, okay, yes, now go, because it does feel a little bit like we get up to the podium and then we're a little unsure, is this even? And then without you guys all being a part of that discussion initially, it does make it a bit challenging that policy review is kind of caught in the middle too, so.
But, but in, to, to this point, um, this was the right direction. I mean, this was taken from a board member and crafted, run through policy review. Think changes were made based on, um, concerns that were, uh, that were raised during that process. Took a little longer than I think any of the staff would, but at the same time, that, uh, that resulted in a better product.
Yeah, I think the end result is probably the same.
And there's nothing that stops the board from, you know, going and talking to all of these department heads. I, I don't think, I mean, I don't think this is anticipated to be, to be voted on today. I'm not trying to say it was or wasn't, but, yeah. So because of that, this is kind of, you know, the next logical step.
Well, I thank you. I did wanna say thank you for putting it on as a work session without possible board action and that push, without having seen this. I know you know me, yeah. And I thought, just even reading through it with Mike as he's making and talking about the changes, it was like, this is really the first time today going through it that I've seen it and known this is the version that you were kind of the most discussed or most recent. And, um, appreciate the opportunity to look at it and even with your comments today, Mike, I appreciate those, but I still wanna read through it. That's me, once again. But I, I still would think, um, myself selfishly would like a work session where I hear the staff, not just Mike summarizing or your summarizing of what these are, but what their concerns were and, uh, good, bad, and ugly, really, because it's a policy supposedly I'm putting into place or not. Or portions of it, it sounds like there were things that we were considering state and us, whatever, and amounts and Mays and shalls and.
I do wonder.
Yeah.
Just thinking, thinking that all the way through and thinking of some of the conversations that I've had. Not to be too quick with it, but I think that might actually be better as individual board members having conversations. Because I think some of those things that are gonna come up in conversations might not be things that we want on a mic and, and aired out, right? There's, there's a lot of considerations as to some of certain details here, um, that I think just, and also might put staff in a funky spot to, let's say oppose a policy that ultimately gets adopted. And, uh, I don't know if it's necessarily a thing that we've gotta do, um, if we can just have the conversations individually and, um, and, and it definitely was more efficient and I get that. But I think there might be some other considerations, just, just knowing the conversations that I've had about the policy, I think it might.
Well, then that would be good. Like I said, I may refer to allow some time for doing that, I was gonna say, because I thought because of the individuals that haven't been part of the meetings, they might want to have those conversations with the staff.
Two things. One directly with this, Mike, help me with this question, and, and a construction project that we're doing. If we have a local general who's using out of the area or out of state subcontractors, or we have a Cedar Rapids contractors using local subcontractors, which one would be defined since it's gonna be one project under that, this general?
Well, in the way it's worded right now, I think it would be the general to determine it and not the others. So if you have a general that uses entirely out of county subs versus a general out of county that uses entirely in county subs, under the way this is defined, because the general is the one who bids the project, uh, the, the local general with all the out of county subs would be given the preference. Now, that's not to say that we can't delve in deeper, that hasn't been discussed at this point on committee, but that, I, I think I may have talked to you on, uh, that one point, Rich. That certainly can be brought into it, it's going to result in a more complicated, um, policy because it's gonna, there's, there's gonna be a lot of potholes in that road, so to speak, no pun intended, but yeah.
Yeah, the, the other part is, I'm working on two other policies to, to do the cleanup and they're just as messy. The lobbying one, we got into, Mike, uh, last week on, and then, um, the postman talked about that a little bit, so. There's a lot of discussion and digestion, both of those we gotta think about.
And the reason for that, by the way, to Richard's point here is, they, one of the things that policy review has, has undertaken is a process of trying to review all of our policies because many of them have not been updated in many years. And in the process, some of them are pretty simple, um, but some of them aren't. And the lobbying one is a classic example where, you know, whoever created it years ago did it to satisfy a couple of key concerns and nothing else. The problem is there's a lot more going on with, uh, with lobbying or with the lobbying policy that should be addressed in there. So that's one that does get more complicated. So yeah, the, the policy review committee's actually been busy on a lot of things beyond this one. This just happened to be one that we kept kind of getting stuck.
Ri, Rich, to your question about subs and where that would go and, uh, I did, like, whoever gets the reward is. That second paragraph of the policy, county board departments are encouraged to give some preference to businesses that pay taxes and participate in local economies. Even in the event, those companies, even if on that project, are using subs from out of the area, presumably, those companies still in their general operation are paying taxes. That, that's not a, that doesn't allow a reasonable expectation for some shell company to come in and, right, like that.
No, I wasn't even thinking of that, probably, that's all another.
Well, that's just, that's just not reason, it wouldn't be reasonable anyway, they're gonna pay taxes in the event just to, just to, for thirty thousand dollars max, that. Right. But those businesses, ABC Construction, that, those projects here, they do a multitude of projects even on a particular bid, if they use out of county work. It is still, it is still an investment into a company that does business here.
My question is, could we wait it if they, if their gen or their subs and if they're located in, if we're using this policy? Could we, could we do?
Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, I'd like to see us factor, um, the subcontractors in there somewhere because it's, I'm approaching this, that I look at, you know, all government expenditures, um, at any level of government are a form of economic stimulus. And our goal here is to maximize that additional benefit of investing our, our citizens' tax dollars in a way that generate, um, get the projects done that we're trying to do, but also generate as much positive economic activity in our community. And so, um, and that's, I'd, I'd like to see it wait for that because there's a lot more, um, dollars staying in our county for, um, you know, if the, if the subcontractors, actual workers are here, living here, working here, um, versus just one, you know, general contractor. And so I'd like to see us factor that in there, in there somehow.
Is that making more mess, Mike?
That's what I thought of a way, is actually, it's, um, and it is, uh, where you define a local business, we could include an out of county general contractor where the county can demo, or where the contractor can demonstrate that half or more of its subcontractors will be businesses within the county. So there are different ways we could go about this. The, the question is where, where do you get, we have the least number of paragraphs, the least amount of, you know, kind of proverbial red tape to try to weigh through and get to it. That's something we can certainly, I'll, I'll try and see if I can propose some, get an email. And then, uh, Michelle just brought a point to me too about having businesses certify and do some kind of a certification that they're, or they're owned.
With their what?
Which would say that they, that they operate, you know, they own property within the county and, uh, and operate business out of that property, you know, according to our definition. So there's a way that we could do that fairly, in a fairly straightforward fashion. The only downside is it's one more paragraph of piece of paper that's gotta be under contract.
Yeah, administration issues.
But yeah, so, yeah, any other questions I'm answered?
Uh, just an ide, just an idea as we talk through the subs part. Just going it out that maybe instead of a flat fifty percent, it is, you know, the portion, tying it back to that, a proportion of the, let's say it's a two million dollar project. Let's just say it is, um, so that it would be of the, eh, I'll send you an email. What I could sort of formulate, where I'm trying to go, trying to tie it back to that, that five hundred thousand, uh, some, some proportionality, um.
Try and, try and see how much money is. And I'm, I'm making a note right now just about where, you know, just on the thought I kind of had just now because I hadn't written that down before as well. So yeah, well, that would need to be, uh, massaged a bit if in fact the board wanted to go with the provision that addressed the generals versus the subs.
You know, that five hundred dollars that was the bid difference? We've eaten up that and ten times more probably of, of time we're spending in trying to do this. I'd just like to know that we're collectively, see, that's the.
Here's, uh, the practicality of doing that.
Yeah.
Of, I mean, to your point of making sure, you know, reviewing every bid that we do and now all of a sudden we've also tacked on, um, we're, we're, we're far enough down this road. At this point, I think it's kind of a deal where we can make a decision, not, not saying it needs to be a day or a month, right?
No.
Uh, but I, but I think the policy effectively crafted is just an up or down to the point of whether we're gonna have a full conversation and then direct staff, you know? I think that might be where we start to look at data to see, but at this point, we've, we've, that kind of, that kind of skinned.
Yeah, it's skimmed. And, and it's not that it hasn't come up, like I say, every few years this comes up and, and for a reason. It hasn't gone forward, but I just thought too, um, that doesn't mean we didn't need to explore it. Even if we go, as much as we've time invested and effort appreciated, I think we'll all remember probably some of these arguments going forward too. But I just like, yeah, there's, the last thing I wanna see, I guess, we've done is relationships harmed or negative impact to the county. Um, we had the gentleman businessman that came in, you know, a couple of months ago and met with some of us. And, um, I really appreciated that conversation because I think what they're. And, um, I really appreciated that conversation because I think whether he liked what was said or not, um, it was good on both parts to hear, you know, his bids were forty and fifty percent over what low bid was. And I assured him that, you know, local preference wouldn't have made any difference at that point in time. But, um, that there are situations where it could and, and we recognize, you know, very much the importance of our businesses and their employees and buildings and things that they have in the area. But the taxpayers, um, like I said, there is cost for doing business that way, but it's just making sure it works. I said, the last thing I wanted to see us do is also to put a policy in place that doesn't benefit anyone. And, and, you know, or has so few benefits to it that it's just like, yeah, we've got it and it's maybe hurt our competition or the number of bidders or things like that, that maybe we don't get help because of something like this. Because they fear it more than they really need to probably, but just say, never mind, we won't, you know, we won't bid anymore. And I just, that negative impact, I thought is, you know, intangible, but you're still weighing what that is for this is difficult to determine, so. I appreciate very much, like I said, the work session, maybe one of our next couple or maybe another one at least, but I think it's certainly not to delay it because I saw, uh, in listening to Steve Furman this morning too, it is like government is slow and I know we, some have often used the term, you know, kicking the can down the road. And it's like, well, we aren't to me kicking it down the road. We're exploring or asking questions or trying to do our jobs for the benefit of, we are spending other people's money to do it. And so we owe that to them to make sure it was a thoughtful process instead of just, uh, this seems good to me and, and I like the fact that we have that, whether we agree or disagree. So thank you for doing it today. I wondered where it was, you know, when the most, no recommendations. Maritating, some, okay.
Yeah, I really, I, I really wanna thank Mike for his due di- I just wanted to thank Mike for his due diligence on this. Um, when I proposed this before, um, and rest his soul, Rick, I, our previous attorney just kind of said it wasn't possible. And so, um, I think that is that we've had a more thorough legal examination is what's opened the door for this and given us a little bit more momentum this time.
Yeah, probably the most thoroughly vetted so far for, for one of our new policies that food and beverage, I thought, took ten times longer than I thought it would as well, but it's just.
It's amazing when you get into the details, right?
Yeah, and all the input, like I said, then it related to several departments and so it was good to have all that input, so thank you. Thanks.
I just have, uh, a few things actually. So my concern is always with the quality of the work afterwards, um, and, and, and so I don't know, like with bids currently, I, I don't even know how the bidding out process works. I've never seen it happen. I'd like to sometimes. But, and I don't know if we've ever had any projects, but I think most recently to Washburn with that pit that formed after Waterworks did the, uh, the work out there. And so, and then I think of streets and that are pretty, and dire straits around here too. And like whatever, okay, could we do or do we already have like a warranty clause in some of these contracts where if the work doesn't stand up within a reasonable lifespan, um, then it needs to be replaced and fixed by the company at their expense? As like with the Washburn thing, Waterworks does it, it sinks, it settles, and then it comes out of our pocket.
So a couple of things, um, first of all, in Washburn, Michelle corrected me for long on this, but it, uh, my understanding is we have a contract, um, Waterloo Water, that is providing a water service there. I think they did what they do as a standard practice and for reasons that didn't make themselves obvious. When they did this, when you're, when you're digging into existing street here and you kind of put it back, get it, patch it up, um, sometimes you realize something, whether it was caused by the pipe, whatever it was, destabilized, there's my understanding. I don't believe that's a typical problem we've had come up where we've had, uh, City Waterloo doing something for us. I don't know if there's any warranties or if they.
Yeah, it's, so the Waterworks responsibility is to fix the water line. They will see it everywhere in Waterloo. They will temporarily put a patch in and then they are supposed to let people know they have to repair the street. I think because it was a COCO street, they thought their repair was good enough because they, that's where the communication broke. That they just didn't tell us, you have fixed the street now. But typically they, they're not in the business of fixing streets. You would have to hire somebody else to do that. So that one probably doesn't necessarily fit.
Yeah.
But you should talk about the construction contracts.
And I was gonna say, in, in contracts for various construction, there are, I believe, frequently warranty provisions that are included in there. There's certain other assurances in there including, you know, uh, different bonds, you know, if the, uh, if the, if things are not done correctly. And so there are assurances in the, the various departments do these maintenance, um, the engineer's office. So they're just gonna kind of talk to you about how that works. Um, it does vary from, from contract to contract, bit to bit, or, you know, project to project. But they, there is always language, I mean, always language about the standards, uh, to which something is supposed to be built. And I think in the, uh, Ryan, you're here, um, I think the results borne themselves out generally. We've had, uh, we've had pretty good results from most of our contractors, like for roads and bridges, right? And when we haven't, how have we addressed it?
So for a lot of our projects, for transportation projects in general, um, we, we don't tend to have warranties because part of those projects is just not an industry standard. There's, there's so many factors at play in that construction. Some of it's out of the contractor's hand as well. Um, but we also do a lot of inspection on our projects throughout the entire time. We generally have an inspector there every day, you know, monitoring, verifying stuff done or in specifications, taking tests, samples, um, to, to ensure it complies with the specifications. We do, like Mike said, we do have performance bonds. So it is a bond, um, that is held to make sure the contractor does perform the pro- you know, the project to the specifications. I don't think we have ever had to call on a performance bond for a project. You know, usually things are done correctly or they are, you know, remedied before the contract is accepted. But like, like we said with some of that, sometimes there is, you know, as a lifespan of a project, at least in our case goes on, um, there's a lot of factors in place. Sometimes it, you know, is something with the contractor. Sometimes it is not. Sometimes it's just, you know, the nature in which we're building on. It was, you know, the subgrade of the road that was, you know, out of everybody's control. So, try and make changes as projects go on if we have to, to change and adapt if needed, but generally that's, that's more our mechanism with our projects.
Yeah, thanks, Rich. And I wasn't trying to throw shade at Waterworks. Like I know they're not done. There's, there'd be street works if they were building roads, but, so I get that. But it was just, that was the only thing I could think that was relevant and we said. Just a couple of projects involved with Hawkeye Tech being one of them, that's on the bond oversight. We actually on one of the, uh, projects, construction projects, asked for an alternate for a second year warranty. Most of the projects are supposed to warranty for one year. Yeah. We actually asked for a second year. And you'd be surprised, some contractors, that's whoa, it scares them and they throw a big number at it. And there's others that have no problems, zero. So that's one of the other catchalls is just saying, hey, if you're gonna do the work, you're gonna do it where you're gonna warranty it for an extra year. Uh, it's a little more consumer protection that way. That's something we can look at.
There is also something under Iowa common law known as the implied warranty for underlying construction. That applies, it doesn't define it by years. I think it just basically, there's something that comes up at any point after the construction, it can be years later that where it show, it shows that it was not built according to the standards of its day. That will create a cause of action against that contractor. And really that's what warranties do. They, the contractor comes in and fixes it or you take action against them. So there are also remedies, uh, under law for those situations as well.
Okay, good. Thanks for the information. So, and then the other thing I was gonna ask here, just, and that won't be too much longer, but the bidding process, when you guys do that for any department, uh, the Amish come to mind because obviously they don't have technology as far as I know or access to stuff like that, but, you know, I hear that they do great work and sometimes for cheaper, um, how would they, how do people get, how do companies get the bids? I know it goes public, but I just don't know anything about it as far as how it gets published. How does everybody, do we just, is there like a database that everybody, all these companies have access to that's relative to the project and then it just comes online?
If you read the policy, and I will, uh, I'll defer to the departments in saying how this plays out, but if you read the policy, uh, it does require publication. I believe we make a website post. There's, uh, sometimes in certain cases, we send them out to certain prospective bidders. Uh, depending on the classification of the project, price wise, it may only require that you send it out to three prospective bidders. Do go more if it's a smaller project and do this for the under twenty-five thousand dollar category. Um, so it kind of depends on where you're at, but the bottom line is it's gotta be published and it's gotta, there are certain, certain places where we advertise it. But as far as whether it can reach, uh, like the Amish, for example, I would say that it could if they want to get in on that because my experience with the Amish is that they work with a, with a, a local company of some kind, Spottin Rose comes to mind. And then that's kind of their way to contact with people. So if they had arranged that, they would have to arrange that company to be, you know, looking out for these bid opportunities. Uh, in order to do that, I, I can't say, um, what they, to what extent they've been on projects.
Right.
I've, I've had to do it once though, and that's how I had to do it, so.
Mike, we could. We could look at adopting, not today, but at a future meeting, probably sooner rather than later, the bidding, purchasing requirements and purchases, their procedures outside of local preference. I don't know if there was a whole lot of. I, I didn't know if there was a timeline that we needed to get into some sort of compliance with, especially the Iowa preference? Or if it's been in existence and we've been.
Um, there's, there's not an absolute timelines, but sooner the better would be the way I put it. The reason I'm not getting overly concerned and asking you to vote on it now and do all of that is because in order to actually enforce that policy, it would have to be a suit taken by a taxpayer claims to be agreed. It wouldn't even be by another bidder. That, that is not allowed. That's the one piece of case law that was on that. So yeah.
So we don't have.
That's why I'm not rushing you on that, but absolutely I would encourage the board to at a future meeting, adopt proportions that are not local preference, assuming the board is not ready to, to put local preference to a vote yet.
Um, and I don't know who else would be interested, but like I said, I'm, I'm happy to like next week try to schedule, like I said, some of those meetings with individual department heads or a group of them or something. If anybody wants to have dates that work or something, some of us can.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
But I, I don't have the ability or flexibility in my job to.
Next week at all, or.
To be present for those, but.
Well, is anything gonna work next week?
What's that?
Would anything, something work for you next week?
It would just depend on the day.
Okay. Maybe we just see what day we're, try.
The lobbying policy, it'll make your brain hurt.
All right. I'm telling you, any other reports or information from the board?
I do, I hate it, but I'll try to be brief. The UCC group, um, met about a week ago, two weeks ago and mentioned that they would be willing to come and do a wrap up of twenty twenty-five, the lobbyists, if we'd like, and then discuss any questions or issues we might have for twenty-six. So just opening that up if, for a future date, nothing was said, they'll work with our schedule. Um, I'm certainly, um, I noticed that we have got a couple of applicants, um, for the interviewing for PNC Commission. And I'm happy to be one of those if someone else would want to, um, it depending on the dates. If we'd like to participate in that, we can have a worry try to schedule that. So I just thought, that's just a reminder. Um, third, I wanted to mention the workforce development merger. Um, I told everyone that we had a meeting and it was on the seventeenth and to see where we were gonna be with that. And, um, we had asked the state to provide some numbers. We didn't have those numbers yet. And so, um, to date, it looked like, you know, Mississippi Valley was the, um, one that had responded. Yes, they were at least willing to merge with, um, South Central, I think it was, with, which were the ones that actually needed the help. Um, the other three of us regions though, um, Central, which was bulk, um, said not at this time as of two seventeen. Um, Cedar Rapids is just part of East Central was not at this time. And, um, Northeast Iowa, which is our region, about half of the counties of the twenty had had discussions. Um, no decisions were made from any of those half, and there was another half that needed to be made. Um, that everybody's just really, I think, in the same position. And I stated it very predominantly at the meeting where we were, would be a board decision. But they hadn't provided enough information for us at this point in time to say, yes, we would even be interested in it. Um, so I said, until that happened, I think we'd be a not at this time and see where things go until they develop. My question then was, um, the timeline that they put us on, you know, was this August meeting that the group would be meeting and they'd need our decisions by then. But when we talked further, at least at last week's, at that seventeenth meeting, it was then if it didn't happen by end time for that meeting, which I had, think hadn't been really clear, then it would need the next quarter. It could be considered. So said, to me, that was a backup for us to have more information provided, what that means for staffing, what that means for the dollars um, to our region and that type of thing. So it wasn't this critical have to do it by August. Um, and, um, we do have a meeting this Thursday, but we'll prob- I'll probably missing that and trying to catch up because of our home meeting mornings. Our work session's gonna take that, so. Fourth thing was just an update on the EMA meeting, and I don't know, Rich, if you touched on this with anyone, but, um, Mindy had, um, asked us to be, um, considering, um, we'd been asked, I think, by other counties to maybe serve as a reception center for the Dwayne Arnold Nuclear Power Plant. That possibly, I think they're expecting it to become active again in twenty-eight. So they needed some decisions in twenty-six for these reception centers and that type of thing that would impact a project like that. Um, obviously there's revenue generated for EMA by doing that. There was no dollars significantly recognized or no dollars, I guess, in that discussion even, um, just recognition of it. And, um, I guess there's more information to come, but I thought before this board would be ready to do that, it'd be a much more of a presentation that would be made to all of us. Um, so that would be something forthcoming. I think we'd wanna get back on. And one thing that wasn't really addressed um, was kind of their decision, obviously, but Johnson County had been a reception center for it in previous years and withdrew or decided not to be now. So I said, that was maybe something we'd like more information on. Or we can gather that ourselves, but something for us to just know why that was because obviously there's pros and cons about it. Lead at least to all of us consider to make a decision on it, but just that heads off on that.
We'll be hearing more of that.
Yeah, I knew it would be because like I said, there's a timeline for them to get some of these things in place before they would be active. Thank you. Thanks.
Part of the EMA thing is they're looking at, uh, putting up a larger building out there to store stuff specifically for equipment they have, but also for, uh, stuff for the nuclear plant as well. Uh, we've turned down some equipment because we did not have the storage place ready to hose, house that kind of equipment. So that, uh, the more will here, uh, where it needs for EMA in the future, some funding is for building.
Well, and it was mentioned at that meeting, however, though, that she was gonna look to grant funding.
Yeah.
For that building because, um, the amount of money in our reserves as an EMA group is only like three. Well, maybe it's four hundred thousand, Michelle. I was gonna say, I was thinking it was three hundred, but I think some of it's been identified as a hundred thousand to have on hand for communities if they were to need it. So it was almost like a reserve, a reserve. But the building that she had proposed was rather sizable and it came in at about two, one fif- one five to two million dollars. So considerably more than what, but is in EMA. And I think her, um, response to that was that she would look at grant funding only. So not ask us to raise taxes. But so that would take some time and who knows with grants anymore. I don't know. But so that would take some time and who knows with grants anymore, I don't know what that'd be, but I did suggest at that time, you know, Nate had mentioned, um, the cooperative effort of working with the MA for buildings, um, and their property and different things too. And he thought there might be some shared interest, so I said, we need to pursue that too. So there's just a lot of things, need more work done, but that's it, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Linda, on the UCC, ICE Act is also supposed to be doing rounds to different counties coming? I haven't heard anything, they scheduling with us yet?
Yeah.
So I don't care, have you heard anything from them?
Not yet.
But they, they have all of our information, they're just starting to schedule, so they, I mean, they'll let us know when.
Oh, cause they kind of kicked it off, didn't they? Kind of like this announcement, like that now they're beginning or something.
They're just starting.
Okay.
But they had sent an email that said, just because you haven't heard from us doesn't mean that you're not on the list and it's ninety-nine counties to coordinate. And I think we did put the fall as our preference, so.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna bring up, we got Irish Rust starting, we got a couple of streets closed down, uh, effective today, and then downtown Waterloo be getting closed down Rust Thursday morning for Irish Rust.
Weather for it.
Weather should be good.
Yeah, it should be.
All right.
So I hit one thing.
Yeah.
Uh, the Pinecrest Building, is there anybody on, uh, for maintenance on right now?
Carol's probably in, is anybody?
Okay, yeah, just, I'm just wondering if there's any progress with that. I know Tuesday, today was supposed to be date of install, I popped over there, I don't know, last week.
Disconnect yourself.
I'm sorry, I feel like I'm in a bad position right now.
Um, I've been out, so I only have little bits of knowledge on this, but I know that we do have, um, a service technician from the vendor onsite today and so we're hopeful that the part can be replaced and we can restart the system hopefully by.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then so, uh, the second part is mostly, I think for Amanda maybe, with the telework policy. So I popped out there for a little bit last week, I know I emailed you guys that. Uh, and it was miserable in that thirty to forty-five minutes that I was there. And so, does that telework policy cover extenuating circumstances like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does, yeah, so it's, um, for the department head approval, they can do more than two days or forty percent of their work week. So Caleb reached out to me, I saw Yolanda, I emailed his commission and, um, yeah, it would be, that would be another example, COVID, something like that where it's just better to exceed the two day threshold and that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Just wanna make sure, people weren't like, uh, to be forced to sweat it out in sauna or burn personal time for something that wasn't their.
The only ones that I would say, if your job truly cannot be remote, there's just nothing.
Right, right.
I mean, that's a different conversation than as to whether that facility needs to be, you know, or whether they shut down for the day, which is one other thing, you know, it's a pay. Um, but yeah, certainly like, some of those nurse physicians are not eligible to be remote. Um, so that would be the only caveat, but, so.
And most department heads do, like I said, kind of such, depending on their own needs and uses of it, have determined it in the past, so it was like.
Yep.
You mentioned someone you might literally talk with, but is that a state, that department, did you meet with some of them as well?
No, yeah, we went around to two or three floors in total and, I mean, I, I felt what I needed to feel and.
Didn't say.
Yeah, point was received.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to make sure that, that the department heads' hands weren't tied to where there's nothing we can do, you guys are just gonna have to suffer. Like there's some flexibility, just using common size decision.
And really even if the policy were not gonna be agreed, I mean, the department head knows what is best for their staff and they'll make that decision. But no, the policy, Caleb did reach out to me and I said, yeah, that's perfectly fine to go. Um, and even the policy exists even outside of those extenuating circumstances, you do other ones that it allows a flexibility, but that would be a perfectly good reason. It's just, you know, operationally, they kind of have to think about that.
Yeah.
You know, how they're gonna still meet those services and those needs and communicate to the members for that. But, and there's those that will not ever be eligible for telework cause their work just doesn't, the responsibility doesn't allow for it, so. There's always that kind of, um, issue that exists.
Thank you. Just when I met with Rory Friday, he was hopeful that they would have the system up and running again by Wednesday.
Yeah, that's what I.
Depending what happens to.
Day, but he thought tomorrow, list they're projected to have it. Yeah, that's what Brad was saying too.
Their related note will be seventy-two degrees.
It's gonna be seventy, yeah, seventy.
All right, uh, Melissa, anything else? Any turn of motion to the adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Favor? All right, thanks everybody.